Good morning, ladies. It is chapter 15 time. And I am again recording this on a Thursday, so if anything newsworthy comes up between now and Tuesday, I will not be able to mention it on this video. I like to do that because I'd like for you to see how what a book that was written so long ago in a different era and in a different nation and a different culture still speaks to us today, but we'll go for it in a different way. I did, I am in that distinguished category of 65 and over. So I did get a vaccine this morning. And as I looked at the numbers, it was in the annex out at the fairgrounds. And people just spread all over standing in lines to get vaccine one or vaccine two. For me, it was vaccine one. So here we are, still dealing with a fallen world. And that is where we are in the Book of Revelation. Today, the chapter 15 is sort of short, but I'm going to take it section by section like I did before. And today, I wanted to divide it really into four S's to keep you on your toes during the lecture. But the first, the four S's are sight and sound. And those are going to be the first verses, two verses, and the last verses. And song is the second section. Satisfaction, and if you want to add of justice, is the third section. And then a fourth section is not even from the Book of Revelation, but it pertains to what is said in chapter 15. And I'm calling it solicitation. What are we solicited to do because of what we hear? So I'll pray and we'll begin. Dear Lord, be with us as you always are. You accompany us in this journey through Revelation and in this journey of life. And we ask for your presence today, your enlightenment in our minds that we might see clearly what John saw and what his words to the church of the first century was. Let us hear your words to us in the 21st century. We love you and we know how deeply you love us. For it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen. So I'm going to begin by reading the first two verses. So we're taking a little at a time. Remember, this is under sight and sign, S-I-G-N. So look for what I'm talking about. "I saw in heaven another great and marvelous sign, seven angels with seven last plagues." "Last, because with them God's wrath is completed." "And I saw what looked like a sea of glass mixed with fire, and standing beside the sea, those who had been victorious over the beast and his image and over the number of his name." The first part or the last part of verse two says, "They held harps given them by God." And then I'll save the B for song because we're going to enter into song mode from sight and sign mode. So why am I saying sight and sound? I want you to know that the verb "I saw" or the subject and verb "I saw" exist 42 times in the Book of Revelation. And three of those instances are in this very chapter. John's, we've talked about John's revelation as a video. It's a piece of media that has a lot of visual aspects to it. So we're always seeing things. And in this chapter, it looks like the sign is the seven angels with the seven last plagues. So these are what is called in the Book of Revelation, the bowls, the seven bowls of God's wrath. But we're not really going to get to those seven bowls until we get to the very next chapter in chapter 16. So be ready for that next week. But they're introduced in this scene. But here's really what we're looking at. It's what the next part says. "And I saw what looked like a sea of glass mixed with fire, and standing beside the sea, those who had been victorious over the beast and his image and over the number of his name." So where are we then if we see this? We see what looked like a sea of glass. You've seen that before in the throne room. There was a sea. And even in chapter 21, when the New Jerusalem descends, you're going to hear, "And there was no more sea." Sea, we've talked about before, can mean that chaotic sense of evil, of destruction. We think of the Red Sea. And especially in this passage, we're going to see that we think of the Red Sea. But the last sea we saw in the throne room had no fire with it. It was calm. It was to denote that the chaos was subdued. And so here we have fire. And I want to read this again. Think hard. And now I'm going to pick up the very first part of verse three. And it will help you situate this. "And I saw what looked like a sea of glass mixed with fire, and standing beside the sea, those who had been victorious over the beast and his image and over the number of his name. They held out harps given them by God and sang the song of Moses, the servant of God, and the song of the Lamb." So now we're going to have to talk about the song of Moses and the song of the Lamb in a minute. But notice, really, all of Revelation hearkens back in some way to what goes on in Exodus and the deliverance of the Israelites. When we speak of Moses, we speak of him often as the great deliverer of the Old Testament. He delivered the children of Israel out of slavery in Egypt. And he brought them out to worship. That was the reason he told Pharaoh. He was bringing them out. Remember the plagues. And we've seen that here are these seven angels with the seven last plagues. We've seen other instances of judgment coming through the seven seals, the seven trumpets. And now we're about to be introduced to the seven bowls. But those destructions are oftentimes termed plagues. They have been before, and now we see this again. And so this idea of the plagues also reminds us of the plagues that Moses brought upon the Egyptians because of Pharaoh's resistance to allowing the children of God to go and worship. And so what is being pictured here is an idea of deliverance. First, we look at the deliverance on the Red Sea. And if you look at this sea of glass mixed with fire, you may recall that in the wilderness that the children of Israel were led at night by a column of fire and in the daytime by a cloud. And so again, we're back looking at the deliverance from slavery. Now, in this chapter, we're looking at a different kind of deliverance. And although Moses was called the greatest prophet that ever lived in the Old Testament, and there would be no one to meet his equal, but there is just one. And it is the Lamb himself, who's also called not only a prophet, but a priest and a king. And so as we look at this, we are put back in mind of a God who delivers his people. He delivers them from slavery. Now, in the judgment of God, in the crucifixion and the resurrection and the session of Jesus on the throne to become the King of kings and the Lord of lords, we see another redeemer. Now, it's not Moses. It's the Lord himself. And it's ultimate deliverance from slavery. But this time, it's not the slavery of the Egyptians. It's the slavery of sin. Now, if we think in terms of revelation and what we've seen, that oftentimes governments are a vessel or let's say a tool of the dragon and his beast and the false prophet. And so governments are sometimes used in God's hands as judgment. And so now we see the same thing here, that there is a government Rome that is persecuting the church of that time. But we've also heard about Assyria, about the Medes and the Persians, about Greece, about Babylon. And Babylon, even in this last chapter we looked at, we heard the words Babylon, Babylon the great, who made all the nations drink the maddening wine of her adulteries, is fallen, is fallen. And so there is judgment, not only on God's household itself into exile, but on those who take God's household into exile. So here, in the throne room, we see the sea that reminds us of deliverance. And we see the fire that reminds us of that column of fire, that pillar of fire that led the Israelites and accompanied them through a wilderness into the Promised Land. And so what is the Promised Land that we're talking about here in this chapter? Not only does it review the Egyptians and the Israelites into the Promised Land of Israel, but it also speaks of in our day and time and their day and time of what is to come, complete deliverance into the new heavens and the new earth. It's a Promised Land. And so some commentators, especially Kistemacher, will refer to this as the escape from the Egyptians and the escape through the Red Sea and the destruction of Pharaoh's army in the Red Sea as judgment against those who will not repent. Remember, Pharaoh would not bend his knee. He would move towards that, but he would move away from it. And ultimately, we see they didn't repent. What lies open now in the first century and in our 21st century for those who follow the beast, who follow the dragon, whose names aren't in the Book of Life, but indeed have the number of the dragon's name, of the beast's name, written on their forehead or on their forehand? And so we're speaking of a shadow that the deliverance in the Old Testament was a shadow of what was to come. We're familiar with the terminology in the Book of Hebrews of this was a shadow, but the reality was yet to come. So we had the reality of the crucifixion, the resurrection, the ascension and the session on the throne of Jesus. But there's yet a reality we have not experienced. And that is Jesus's second coming, an ultimate deliverance and ushering into the throne room of heaven and seeing for the first time with our own eyes, as Job says, "With our own eyes I see my Savior." And so that lies before us and is spoken about in this chapter to the first century as well as to us today, but calls to mind the history of the Israelites and the deliverance in the Old Testament. I want to go back to the very first verse though because it is verse, "We are introduced to these seven angels." We're going to see them in full force in the next chapter. But here, they're mentioned almost as an aside that those are seven angels with the seven last plagues. And John says this, "Last, because with God's wrath is completed." I want to, in your questions for this chapter, I ask you to go back to the seals, the seven seals, and the seven trumpets. And if we look at the total destruction or the completion of God's wrath spoken about here, we don't see the completion of God's wrath in the seals nor in the trumpets. So in the seven seals, there was a fourth of the people were destroyed, if you recall that. And so in Revelation 6:8, you know, this hair is bothering me, so I might as well just point it out because I know you're thinking, "What is she doing with her hair?" I'll have to bring a bobby pin next time because it is not repenting of its straying ways. So it's straying over my face and getting in my way. But just know that I know it and I'll probably continue to swipe it. But in Revelation 6:8 on the fourth seal, this is said, "When the fourth seal is opened, death and hades kill a fourth of the earth." And what we see in the Book of Revelation, and we see it here by the terminology in this chapter, that his wrath is complete, that there's a progression. And over time, in the history of the world, we see that progression. And so we are used to the world being a fallen place, of there being all kinds of disasters, man-made and natural disasters that have plagued people from time immemorial. And so here, we see that in this chapter, we're going to get introduced to the very last judgment scenes. But as we began with the judgment scenes with the fourth seal or with the seals, that there was a killing of a fourth of the earth. But when we got to the trumpets, we hear this. "The horses and riders I saw in my vision looked like this. Their breastplates were fiery red, dark blue and yellow as sulfur. The heads of the horses resembled the heads of lions, and out of their mouths came fire, smoke and sulfur." Anytime you see fire, smoke and sulfur, you know you're talking about judgment and sometimes the abyss. A third, now here is the comparison. Now, a third of mankind was killed by the three plagues of fire, smoke and sulfur that came out of their mouths. So we've had a fourth with the seals, a third with the trumpets. And now with what is coming in these last plagues, which are called the bowls, we see that it's complete destruction. There's always, when it's partial, time for repentance, just like Pharaoh had the opportunity to repent and to follow God, the only true God. And so in the Book of Revelation, we've seen there's always with the judgment, a call to repentance. But in every case with the seals and with the trumpets, we saw that even though they wanted rocks to fall on them, to kill them, that they refused to repent. But that time of repentance is going to be removed with the final judgment. And so we're getting ready to see that. But before we see that, you've been used to the juxtaposition of judgment and then there's security and safety for God's people. So I had a biblical theology professor, I've mentioned him before, Dr. Van Groningen, who always talked about any time you see God's judgment, you see God's grace. And even in the final judgment, what brings judgment and condemnation to those who don't follow the Lamb, but follow the dragon? There is a whole community of people, God's people, that that same judgment brings salvation to them. So you've got judgment and God's grace. And so here, the very next scene, after we've heard about this judgment that is complete, we see this, that the people sang a song. So we've looked at sight and sign, except we're going to see another sight in the very end, but I'm saving it for right now. We're going to see it at the end of this chapter. But right now, we've seen sight. "I saw, I saw," we've seen two instances of that subject and verb. "I saw in heaven another great and marvelous sign. I saw what looked like a sea of glass." And then the next one we're going to see is that he saw that the tabernacle of the testimony was open. And so he's going to begin, continue to see things. But right now, we're going to hear something. And it's a song. And it's the song of Moses, the servant of God, and the song of the Lamb. If you look back at Exodus 15, you see the song of Moses. And it's rather long. Miriam led them in it, singing it. And I'm going to read a portion of it just for you to get a sense of it. But I ask you in the questions to take a look at it. "I will sing to the Lord, for he is highly exalted. The horse and its rider he has hurled into the sea." That was the Red Sea. "The Lord is my strength and my song. He has become my salvation. He is my God, and I will praise him. My Father's God, and I will exalt him. The Lord is a warrior; the Lord is his name. Pharaoh's chariots and his army, he has hurled into the sea. The best of Pharaoh's officers are drowned in the Red Sea. The deep waters have covered them. They sank to the depths like a stone." You know, when we talk about the abyss, the abyss is down in the sea. And so anytime we're talking about that sea, it is this sense of condemnation of judgment. And yet, in this scene, there is that fire in the sea that speaks of God's presence with his people, those who follow him. Now, here, we're going to read the song of the Lamb in 15. "Great and marvelous are your deeds, Lord God Almighty. Just and true are your ways, King of the ages." And so whereas over here, we had, "He is my God, my Father's God. He's a warrior. He's the Lord Yahweh." We have here, "He's the Lord God Almighty. He's the King of all ages, of the Red Sea event, of the first century event and these seven churches that were being persecuted, of the 21st century of COVID, of racial injustice, of the riot on the Capitol lawn." All of these things that we're dealing with right now, he is the King of this age. And then this question is asked, "Who will not fear you, O Lord, and bring glory to your name?" After all, they said, "Don't fear the one that can kill the body, but fear the one that can destroy the body and the soul. Who will not fear you, O Lord, and bring glory to your name? For you alone are holy. All nations will come and worship before you, for your righteous acts have been revealed." Let's talk about this song a minute. First of all, we're asked to sing about what the Lord has done, his deeds, what he has accomplished. And we've talked about in the Book of Revelation and even in this song, we see that he has saved a people. And there was a mighty and marvelous act indeed that was done for that to happen. For that to happen, God had to be satisfied. And we're looking at that satisfaction now. And we're going to see it in the verses to come as well. What do I mean by satisfied? Well, if God, even from the beginning, said, "The wages of sin are death. And if you eat of this fruit," that he talked to Adam and Eve about, "If you eat of the fruit of that tree, you shall surely die." And so the idea of judgment against sin entered the world at that time. And so if God is just and the Justifier, that's what we're seeing in this chapter, that his justice must be served. Because if by nature, by his very essence, he is just, then he can't just overlook what he said would cause death. In Revelation, we're talking, we're used to talking about not only the first death, which is the death of your body, but the second death, which is the death of your soul. And death of the soul does not mean you actually disappear out of existence. It means that you're separated from God, which, because in the Bible, life is equated with connection with God. And to be separated with, from God is the second death. And so we're looking at the satisfaction that he brought, which is the reason that this is the song of the Lamb. And so what was presaged or predicted or foreseen in the deliverance through the Red Sea, of a deliverance from slavery, is seen now, the deliverance from the slavery of sin for all times, for the people of God. But there had to be a penalty that was required. And that penalty, in this case, was taken up by Jesus, although he was perfect. In this song, it says, "For you alone are holy." And that speaks of the Trinity, the Father, the Son and the Spirit, holy, holy, holy. What does holy mean? It means set apart. It means separate. It means alone in a category. There's no one else who fits that category. And that is the reason that there was only one person who could pay the penalty of the sin for all people, for all times. And that was the eternal Son of God, who became man, who took on skin, who had a body, and his body met physical death. But he was resurrected. And his resurrection is a promise to us of our own resurrection, that not only our souls will be with him, but our very bodies. We will lead an embodied existence in the new heavens and the new earth along with the embodied Jesus, the incarnate Son of God. But he says, "You alone are holy. All nations will come and worship before you, for your righteous acts have been revealed." His righteous acts were revealed in the life of Jesus. We all, we often speak of the death of Jesus being what we emphasize. But what we forget about is the life of Jesus was a righteous life. And his righteousness is what he has imputed to us so that it's not our righteous deeds that gain us salvation. It's his righteous acts revealed through Jesus, imputed to us. But my solicitation at the end of this lesson is going to call us for a sacrifice. He sacrificed himself for us. And he calls us to pick up our cross and to follow him. But more about that later. But more about that later. Let's move on. We're going to have another sighting. "After this, I looked, and in heaven the temple, that is the tabernacle of the testimony, was opened. Out of the temple came the seven angels with the seven plagues." Here we see those that were introduced in that very first verse of this chapter are now spoken of again. So they came out of the temple. Now, what's spoken about here is the temple where the tabernacle of the testimony was opened. Well, what is this tabernacle of the testimony? There is in the temple the Holy of Holies. There's the holy place that is adjacent to it. But then the priest, the high priest himself, only once a year, was able to go and enter the Holy of Holies. And in the Holy of Holies was the Ark of God, that is the mercy seat of God. That was where God's presence dwelt, in the temple. And in the ark was the law, the Ten Commandments. Here it's called the testimony, that's what it means, the tabernacle of the testimony. So this is the scene of the Holy of Holies. Now, you recall at the crucifixion that the curtain that separated the Holy of Holies from the holy place was ripped in two and caused an opening and symbolized the idea that because of Jesus's crucifixion, his subsequent resurrection and ascension and session, I say all four of those together because they belong together, because that's what accomplished our salvation, not just now on earth, but our glorification in heaven. And so the, what we're seeing is a parting of that curtain, and out comes the seven angels. And we actually see the mercy seat of God. And we're, our attention is brought to the law of God that sits within that mercy seat. "Out of the temple came the seven angels with the seven plagues." Here's how they were dressed. You know, I saw that Demi Moore was in the Paris haute couture fashion show that just took place. Well, here's another fashion show. We're not only told about these angels, we're told about what they were wearing. And there's a reason we're told that. They were dressed in clean, shining linen and wore golden sashes around their chest. That was priestly garb. We saw it on Jesus in the opening chapter of the book of Revelation. It's priestly gifts. Now, one commentator, I think it was Kistemacher, actually said, he doesn't believe that this refers to a priestly function here in this chapter. But it's hard to separate when you see this kind of description of the clothing they wore, when that's the way it's described in the Old Testament and in places in the New Testament, and indeed what Jesus wore. "Then one of the four living creatures gave to the seven angels seven golden bowls filled with the wrath of God, who lives forever and ever." You know, you have to scratch your head. First of all, what does a bowl full of the wrath of God look like? And it's only because we're in an apocalyptic book that we're even talking about this, because as you've gotten used to, this is symbolic. And so the wrath, the cup, we talked about this last week. The cup that Jesus did not want to drink was that. It was the wrath of God, it was the cup of his wrath, as distinguished in the prostitute that we're going to see very soon. And she's called Babylon. And the wine of her adulteries, the wine of her debaucheries, the wine of her evil. And so we are, we are comparing that. But here is God's wrath, and it's pictured as a bowl. We've seen a bowl of his wrath flung before to the earth in the trumpet scenes. But we're going to see in this next chapter, we're going to see seven bowls poured out on the earth and the inhabitants of the earth. When we talk about the four living creatures, we're put back in mind of chapters four and five, the throne room scenes. Because remember, surrounding the throne of God were these four living creatures representing all of creation. And then the 24 elders, the elders are not brought up here, but these four living creatures, they were the ones that gave these bowls of God's wrath to the angels. And notice, this is a God who lives forever and ever. If God lives forever and ever, then what about his wrath with those who have never bowed their knee to him? Then it is forever and ever. It's not a temporary punishment. It's an eternal nightmare for those who don't follow the Lamb and were given every chance to do it, but refused to repent and bow down. And this is the last verse. "And the temple was filled with smoke from the glory of God and from his power. And no one could enter the temple until the seven plagues of the seven angels were completed." Looking at the time, and I'm trying to remember when I started. Okay. It's about over, isn't it?
It's been 40 minutes.
Okay. I've got to wind up, I told you 40 to 45. So let me wind up because I want to get one more place. This is from a website called Bible Ref. God's judgment may not always fall on sin immediately, but it will fall inevitably. And that is what we're seeing here. When it falls, there will be no further opportunity to repent and avoid it. And it will be experienced forever and ever. Quickly, I want to talk about heaven opening. You've seen it in the other, the cycle of the seals, the trumpets. Now you're seeing it here. Revelation 4:1 and 5 says this. "After this I looked, and there before me was a door standing open in heaven." Now, this is beginning the throne scene in chapter four. So chapter four and five are the throne scenes. "And the voice I at first heard speaking to me like a trumpet said, 'Come up here, and I will show you what must take place after this.'" So that is in the cycle of the seals. Remember, in chapter five, there is only one worthy to open the seals, and that is the Lamb who looked like he was dead. Revelation 8 is the trumpet cycle. It says this. "When he opened the seventh seal, there was silence in heaven for about half an hour." It is this dramatic pause before it begins to fall apart after that. "And I saw the seven angels who stand before God, and the seven trumpets were given to them." So this is back when there were seven trumpets given, not seven bowls of wrath. "Another angel, who had a golden censer, came and stood at the altar. He was given much incense to offer with the prayers of all God's people on the golden altar in front of the throne. The smoke of the incense, together with the prayers of God's people, went up before God from the angel's hand. Then the angel took the censer, filled it with fire from the altar, and hurled it on the earth. And there came peals of thunder, rumblings, flashes of lightning, and an earthquake," which always happens when you see these judgment scenes. And so here we see the silence in heaven, and then we begin to experience the trumpets. But what I want to call your attention to is what is now happening with the completion of God's wrath? When through these cycles, it's been progressive, a fourth of the people on earth, a third of the people on earth, and now it's going to be complete, that we see that this is an answer to the souls that were under the altar in scene, in chapter five. In chapter five, we see the souls under the altar, and they are praying, "How long, O Lord? I mean, when are you going to do something about this?" Well, that is why it's not oftentimes immediate, but it's inevitable. And now inevitability has met up with us. In Revelation 11:19, this is the whole drama when we see the woman and the dragon, and then we're going to see the beast, we're going to see all these characters. There are seven of them, including a voice from heaven. Then God's temple in heaven was opened, it says. This is Revelation 11:19. "And within his temple was seen the ark of his covenant." We're back in the Holy of Holies. "Out of the temple came the seven angels with the..." I'm sorry, I skipped down to Revelation 15. "We saw the ark of his covenant, and there came flashes of lightning, rumblings, peals of thunder, and earthquake, and a great hailstorm," so that you see the same thing. In this chapter, we see heaven open. And yet, this is said. It says, "The temple was filled with smoke from the glory of God and from his power, and no one could enter the temple until the seven plagues of the seven angels were completed." And so it was closed. But what we take from these verses about heaven being open is that curtain being torn, and that heaven is now open to us. Now the judgment has to come about completely. And then heaven is going to be open. But I don't have time for everything I wanted to say, so I'm going to end with this. And I'm going to pick up next time with a few things I had planned to say today. But advancing ahead to chapter 19, I've read this to you before. But we're seeing the rider on the white horse. "I saw heaven standing open." Do you see the invitation? "And there before me was a white horse, whose rider is called Faithful and True." And as we saw, a sword came out of his mouth. He was leading an army of people, and he was ruling with an iron scepter. And he was obliterating the enemy, Satan, the beast, the false prophet, the inhabitants of the earth who have never bent a knee to him. And so he's completing the fury of God's wrath. He saved us from that. And I'm going to read just one little verse from Romans. It's Romans 12, and I'm going to come back and start here next week. Romans 12, verse 21. "Do not be overcome by evil, but overcome evil with good." We're going to find that Christ gave his life for us, and then he's called us to give our lives for him. And in doing that, this is what we are to be known about. We overcome evil with good, we even love our enemies. And so that is a solicitation to you. It's a bridge this week, but be ready for the full force of it next week. But let me pray and then go and celebrate. Read through and even make a tune-up this week for the Song of the Lamb. It's the one who separated you in the same way he's separated and apart. He has now separated you, and we are apart to worship, to sing, to lead a life worthy of him. Dear Lord, thank you for this encouragement and yet scenes of reality from this book that you gave us through Jesus, through the angel, through John, and now we're reading it today. Let us take your words to heart. Father, this seems so fantastical because of the imagery, that sometimes it's hard for us to take it seriously or even to imagine that one day this is really happening, that we will be separated out and live a life with you. Father, give us the patient endurance that has been talked about in this book. Fill us with your Spirit, fill us with your love, pour out your love in us, that we might withstand the evil one in our day and give ourselves to you. For it's in Christ's name we pray, amen.